I mean, this meeting remote via Zoom. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 4:30. We have the remote attendance. It is in the agenda, the Specific Open Meetings Act. I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Give me a second. All right, all in favor? I needed a roll call due to the new laws. So, Sophia?
She's on mute. Sophia?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
There you are.
All right, Louise?
I wonder if nobody heard me make a motion.
Yeah, that's why.
Yes.
All right, Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ngazi?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. So, the minutes were sent prior to the meeting. Does anybody have any corrections for the last meeting? I didn't have any.
Me either.
Neither. All right, then I will take a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
A second.
All right, all in favor? Do it again. So, Sophia?
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ngazi?
My screen is frozen, so I'm going to say "I."
Yes, okay.
Because I don't know when you're calling me.
Donna?
Yes.
All right. So, from my understanding, we did not have any public comments. And there was no written communications from the public. So, we will move on to the City Librarians' Report.
And once again, we're joined by all our Division Heads, so I want to keep it relatively brief. We actually did have a few circulations, which is because staff has been in here and we've been checking things out, and things have also been renewed. So, we are on a pace, though. Now, after April, when we didn't have any... Am I sharing the screen? It doesn't look like I am, I'm sorry.
Rick?
Yes.
Do you mind? I mean, it's fine when you're talking about a report, but for most of the discussion, it's good to be able to see everybody, which I can't when you're sharing your screen.
Okay, so should I be sharing the screen now, or should I?
Well, are you going to talk about these numbers? Are you going to make more?
I am, I am.
Okay.
So...
If you hit Gallery View on the side, you can see a few more people, but...
And still see the screen?
Yeah.
You know, but it's still not everybody.
Yeah, it's not everybody.
So...
The projected change after one month of being closed, one full month of being closed, was relatively small, but you see another month adds quite a bit. We're now predicting a change of about 38% to 34% to the negative insertion. I'm not sure how much that really tells us, because we've been closed. We're looking at, you know, 70% to 80% increase in electronic circulation. And that's not including our oddly use of the non-circulating electronic material. So, things that you don't check out for a time period, like databases, has gone down a little bit since we've been closed. But the circulating things have exploded. And the last thing I want to add before I turn it over to the Division Heads, unless anybody has any questions on my report, is I just... You know, I talked about the staff, I think the last two months. That's staff in general, and how well they responded to this. But I'd like to talk about the leadership team in general, more specifically, because these guys have been amazing. I put it in the report, but I worked at... This is the fifth library I've worked at, one of which is one of the most prestigious libraries in North America. And I'd put this team up against anybody. They have been incredible, and I just... The teamwork and the intelligence and the flexibility and the willingness has just been off the charts. So, I want to say that publicly and say thanks to all of you guys, to Robert Edwards and to... I'm going to name them all. I'm going to name them all. And Carol Zies and Alyssa Henkel. And Matt Wilkerson and Becky Damps, because they've been just... They've made this thing kind of fun on some days, and that's weird. But I want to thank you guys. So, I'm going to turn it over to them now. And do we have an order for them to give their reports? Or actually, I'll turn it back over to you.
Could I ask some questions before you turn it over? I've got three questions, so I'll ask them all together, and they may be answered by the other people. And I do appreciate your kudos for your team, because it's really great. The first one is, what were the numbers like on the first physical... On the first physical day of reopening the building? What kind of numbers do you have for remote customer service? And what typically are those requests? And how many high school students signed up for cards?
The physical numbers.
Yeah, I think you're anticipating some of their reports.
Okay, that's fine.
But I can tell you, it was about roughly... Tuesday, roughly, 350 people came through the door. It looked to me like today was on a pace to exceed that. Six-hour day rather than the usual 10-hour day. And that's about... Well, probably, we average about 750 a day under normal circumstances. But I'll let these guys, as they do the reports, get to your other two questions, Amy, because I think those will be addressed.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll start out with Robert first.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you.
So, I'll give a brief overview of the two departments. Admin, we have one person that's been coming in throughout this whole period, and we have a person that's out. And she's scheduled to come back in for starting next week. She has been in the building, but she hasn't been in full-time as many hours as the rest of us. The Circulation Department, everyone in the Circulation Department has been back in the building, has been working. And to answer your question, Amy, on the first day that we are open to the public, we had approximately 1,012 items checked out. There were 865 of those items were checked out by Decatur patrons, but we had 147 of those items checked out by other libraries around us. And that's including Barclay, Orianna, Mount Zion, Moiqua, Lincoln, Iliopolis, and Forsyte. We had 183 patrons check out items. So, that's the actual patrons checking out the items. So, even though there were people who came through the door who did the computers or whatever, we had some people still checking out materials. We still have approximately about 9,000 items out. We've checked in about 4,000 or 5,000 of those items that were out. We are quarantining them as they come in. We're also... We created 1,400, I think it's actually about 1,353 e-cards for the Stephen Decatur and MacArthur High School students, so they can participate with e-resources. And while we were going through those e-cards, we also cleaned up the cards, so these kids can also participate in the summer reading program. There has been a real push. I've been pushing real hard with Verizon and Sprint to get hotspots. Right now, we're on a pace to probably to get about 25 to 30 more of those hotspots that we can check out, as to mobile Wi-Fi. And so, I have some more numbers, but I don't want to go through, you know, too much of it. But staff has been working really hard. Kudos to the staff that's been coming in and getting these materials processed, so we don't have such a big amount when we open up for more hours. We started the training for MyLibra, which is actually the... We had the introduction. The training actually starts tomorrow. So, we're looking forward to adding that to our curbside. So, it's been very positive. Everything has been positive. Looking forward to getting back in the building. I'm just... I'm really encouraged by the staff's willingness and their... It's like everyone's motivated coming back in to get back to working with the public.
That's awesome. All right, thank you. So, Rick posted about 1,500 e-cards in May. How many cards do we normally do in a month?
We made... Oh, go ahead, Rick. About 150, 200. But the total for May overall was 1,516 e-cards, you know? And that's the two schools and then just other people, you know?
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm glad to report that the teachers have been working with us all the time. I mean, all along, through the whole process. And also, Ilma Hartland has been working with us through the whole process. So, it's been very good, very good.
Wonderful. All right, Becky, you are up next.
Okay, so basically, the local history's been working on pretty much the same projects as last month, what I told you guys about last month with all of our digital upgrades. We're still doing Omega, and we're still doing birth records. As of today, the official number for Omega entries as of from March 17th to now is 918. So, that's pretty good. It's almost 1,000 in a span of a few months. So, Leanne is my part-time employee. She's coming back in the building as of yesterday. She will be here once a week. She's taking back over requests from me, which is great, because I have been pulled to other directions. And we are hoping and praying and aiming for a full local history opening with volunteers in mid-July. As of right now, we stayed closed, because our collection is a browsing-only collection. It does not leave the building. And people like to sit and stay here, and we're kind of not doing that right now. So, we're hoping for mid-July.
Wonderful. All right, Alyssa?
Hello. Last time that we met, I told you all about the fabulous things that our staff are doing, and they're still doing those. And they've all been in the building this week, save two, working really, really hard to be ready for the patrons to be in the building. So, today, I've chosen to talk about things we've done while we're working remotely. We were able to subscribe to three new services. I'd like to go over those. So, the first one is Patron Point, which is a marketing automation platform, and it's created exclusively for public libraries. And it will connect our Polaris and data from our other subscriptions to create specialized messaging to our patrons. So, my staff are currently preparing a welcome email series that's going to go live on July 1st. So, when a new patron registers for a card, they will get the first welcome email. And then, based upon what they've indicated, if they have kids, what their interests are, they will receive other emails that are geared specifically towards them with our programs, resources, and services. And we can also create campaigns to showcase, say, a specific resource. And Patron Point receives the data from our other subscriptions, like Hoopla, Canopy, and we can see if people responded to our call to action. We're really excited to get this started, so that we can deliver these services better and engage how often they're used and what we're saying, if it's well-received. The one is ESCO Discovery Service. We call it ES. It provides users with an easy, powerful means of accessing all of our information resources through a single search. So, a patron can quickly access the journal articles available via ESCO or Gale or Hoopla, Library on the Go, Freedom, all of them with one search. And we can't currently do that with the shared catalog, because Decatur Public Library isn't allowed to load our digital resources there. So, this is something that we've been wanting, asking for, needing for a long time. Finally, have access to resources they might not have known we had. And finally, the third one is Odilo. And it's like Canopy or Hoopla. It's a pay-per-use, but they specialize in foreign languages. And so, currently, they are creating, curating, a collection of Spanish-speaking, Spanish titles, audio, and ebooks for our Spanish-speaking community. And I think I mentioned this last month, but they've also provided us with a book discussion group platform, three of them. And I see that as a way, since we still can't have meetings or programs, to have book discussion groups for the summer, but specifically for very large groups, like the one you might have heard that Julia Livingston's leading. When you have over 100 people, it's hard to have discussions via Zoom. So, if we could maybe provide this platform for her, we'd be able to have open communications via the platform. So, I'm very excited about that.
Cool. All right. So, Matt... Oh, sorry, Amy, go ahead.
Could I ask a question? The second service, I didn't quite get the name of it.
ESCO, which is E-S-C-O.
Okay. And when is that going to be? When is that going to be?
It takes about six to eight weeks to set it up. I actually have a kickoff meeting with them tomorrow, so hopefully really soon.
Okay, and it will include our catalog or won't include our catalog?
It will. You can search our entire catalog, as well as all of our electronic resources at one time. So, for instance, let's say I wanted a book on COVID-19, which you're not actually going to find, but people would ask for. It will actually show you journal articles that are currently being written, which you wouldn't find on our normal catalog.
That's great.
Thank you.
We talked about it a little bit last week when we were doing the finance meeting, because we asked about it, because it was in the bills.
Right.
All right. So, I have no more questions for Alyssa. We've got Matt.
Hello. We recently purchased a new coin and bill vending machine and an additional color printer. Chris and I set up today, so patrons can print without any intervention from staff. It's removed staff from the process. We've also purchased a team, what's called Team Viewer License, which will let staff connect to a patron's PC and walk them through steps and any problems they may have. Chris and I have been both back in the building quite a bit now. And since the last board meeting, we've answered 107 help calls from staff. And finally, we're in the process of moving back to the Illinois Century Network and dropping our Comcast connection, because they have more outages than I think they should. So, I'm familiar with that. And so, the city is working on getting the connections configured and everything in the library. And that's about it.
All right, excellent. Any questions for Matt? All right, so we will move on to Carol. Here, I'll mute.
You're muted.
No. Well, I don't have a lot of fancy numbers, but I do have something exciting, books. Things are being received and processed and cataloged and sent out. And thanks to my wonderful staff, we're getting... Everything that's available for Decatur Patron is going out first and quickly. I've got three items right here, which will go to Robert, and Robert will hand them to somebody probably tomorrow. So, that's exciting. It's just thrilling to be able to put the books back in their hands and to see people in the building and to know that we've got stuff for them to look at now and check out. So, I don't have a lot of numbers. I usually do my numbers at the end of the month. We just pretty much hit the ground running. Every... My whole staff is working. A couple of people are still doing a little bit at home, but we're about 80% here. I've been 100% in the building for about three weeks, and I'm pretty excited. It's just pretty darn thrilling to be doing this again. And so, I don't know. If you guys have questions for me, but we're just... We're going gangbusters and loving it.
I did walk through there yesterday. So, or Tuesday, I walked through and just said hi to everybody.
Yeah, yeah. We're pretty happy to be here.
Yeah. I didn't see Becky. She was only... You were the only one I didn't see. I saw Matt walking, but...
I was in my office... Yesterday, I was in my office.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
So, I just must have missed you guys, so...
Yeah, I was not on the floor later in the afternoon, sorry.
Yeah, I left at around 12, I think. So, does anybody have any questions for the Division Heads? Any other questions? I think Amy asked... You asked another question specifically about calls, like remote customer service, I guess. Is that right?
Right. Like, what kinds of questions are people asking? And how does that compare to when we were open?
And I think that might be Alyssa.
I get some. Rick gets some. I'm kind of divvying them up. The ones that I've been receiving, especially, I've been receiving more since Tuesday, they're asking what they can do when they come in the building. They're asking to read their PIN numbers. And a lot of times, their card has expired. So, that's generally what it is. They're having a problem with their card, and they need somebody to help them out and fix it. But how does curbside work? And we've had patrons from other libraries ask about how they can take advantage of our resources. At this point, they have to drive here to walk in, and they could check something off the shelf.
And Robert's team gets a lot of those, too. And they've helped people renew their cards and, you know, sign up for e-cards that has been expedited, and it's that sort of thing. And it's... Or, you know, one the other day was, you know, somebody had something on hold before we closed, and somehow she... Now that we're open, she got... She was at the top of the list, and now she's number 250. So, we got that fixed for her. It's that kind of thing. Cards expired, curbside questions, renew them, meeting rooms, when... And the inevitable, when are you going to be open? You know, so that's... Those are the long and short of it. I want to say that a couple of things about the reports. That's the nicest thing I've ever heard Matt say about Comcast. And a very subtle way for Alyssa to remind me to write that welcome email, so that I can get it out. I will get that written. And if there are no other questions, I'm going to tell these guys they're free to go, but if there's anything else that's a question.
Are they going to continue the storytime hours now that the library is open? Because they're a great resource. You know, they're kind of out there as a library for parents that are looking for something for their children.
I think we can admit that we're reaching a group of people that we couldn't reach before, people that didn't come in. And I mean, part of the problem is, is we cannot keep them up there forever because of publishing restrictions. So, some of them, we might have to take them down by a certain date. But we're thinking of alternatives, especially as we're in the building. We can be doing live ones, because we're building Monday through Thursday. So, I don't see it as going away. I certainly enjoy doing them, and I think everybody else does, too. Keeps us on our toes. It'll just have to be done differently.
So, by live, live and not recorded, you know? So, it's just a... That way, you get... You know, you don't have to worry about the copyright restrictions.
Can you film it, Facebook Live? Like, can you do that and then take... I mean, like, take it down when it's done, or... I don't know.
I'm not exactly certain how that will work, but there are some publishers that you're only allowed to do it if you do it live. And then, only if you have... You can't have a public platform. So, for instance, some of our storytimes are going way beyond Illinois.
Right, right.
And that restriction, we're going to have to keep it somehow in-house. We're just going to have to look into it. But I don't see us stopping. And we have... I think we've got it through July already recorded.
That's amazing.
Recordings that are out there now are not Facebook Live, directly recorded video. Okay, got it.
Correct. We record them in advance, and we plug them in to go out every week at 7 o'clock. And then, we also have to send emails to some of the publishers stating what we're doing and when it goes live. And some of them, we've had to remove, because we didn't have at the beginning. Nobody really knew how this was going to play out. So, definitely have several publishers that we rely on. We always choose books from those publishers, because we know we can do it.
Okay, got it.
Awesome.
That's a whole nother wrinkle with all the copyright stuff. Museum...
It had us on our toes.
All right, so any other questions before they go? If they want, they can stay if they want, I guess.
Just along those same lines. I had my hand up, but you probably can't see it. Is there a way to have the recordings be available only for maybe a shortened amount of time?
That is what is happening because of the pandemic. We have been given a limited period of time by which we can have those up. And we kind of imagine that the longer the pandemic lockdown lasted, the longer we would be allowed to do that. But as things start to open up, it might very well change. But we do have a working document of all the publishers and what their restrictions are, what we can do, what we can't do. There are some authors who have given us carte blanche. We just have to pay attention, and as things change, be flexible, adaptable.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Sorry, Ngazi, I had my participants, like, you were a little... Like, because your name is down the list. So, we'll move on to committee reports. I will go ahead and... I'm going to go ahead and give the personnel report, since Michael was having some issues last time. So, I'm going to start off with the diversity, equity, and inclusion discussion. We... A lot has changed since our committee meeting. The world has changed. So, I guess this is my call to action to our board, to the library in general, that, you know, we can do better. So, my goal is to, you know, our goal, I feel like... And I know I can't speak for you guys, but this is my personal goal, is to listen to our community. We feel we are the heart of our... Of Decatur, of Decatur, basically. So, we just need to figure out how we can serve our community better. I would like your feedback and suggestions. And I'm working on reaching out to some of our community leaders. I know Rick is doing that. I think some of the other Division Heads are as well. And just how we can advocate for the library, especially for this issue. I mean, I don't know. Does anybody have any other discussion for this? I mean, I know Rick had some things of what we're actually doing from the committee meeting.
Yeah, we were able to... A member of our community, Julia Livingston, she started a book discussion group on Facebook, and it got about... About a race, and it got huge really quickly. And our staff was quick-thinking, saw that, and said, "How can we help?" So, we are supporting in the form of making sure that, you know, going forward with the book, the next book discussion... I think the next two titles have been named. Making sure that the library has plenty of copies of those for the group. And also, we're talking to them about, you know, can we help them with their platform, with keeping the discussion going in between actual live Zoom meetings? For instance, Alyssa talked about Odilo a while ago. One of the features Odilo has is that a platform to do just that, is to continue to have not real-time, but continuous book discussion groups. So, we might be able to help out with that. And also, one thing I was willing to help out, but is Livingston got done herself. She actually got the author of the first novel to come and make an appearance at the first book discussion group. So, that's one thing that we were able to just jump right in on and help out with. And we... I know that Robert has... I'm going to let him talk, because he's made some progress with his... Right before we shut down, Robert was going to go to a three-day diversity training in Springfield and had, I think, finally, pretty much got his diversity committee together, and then this happened. But Robert, I'm going to let you give us a report, if you would, on where things stand with your committee. I know you've made some progress.
Here, I'll mute.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you, yeah. Well, actually, there's a couple of names that have been suggested to me. I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right. Tae Sharad.
Tae Sharad.
Tae Sharad.
Yeah, she's wonderful.
And also Brenda Major and Dr. Robert Breilock. There are some people who I'm going to be talking with really soon. And there's a couple more that was suggested today. And I was talking to Dr. Norman, actually texting her today, trying to get some input from her, Dr. Janelle Norman. So, right now, it's still in the gathering process. And thankfully, you know, we've been working with the community for years. So, a lot of it, it's not a foreign... So a lot of, it's not a foreign thing for us to get out in the community or to reach out to the community leaders and say, you know, what can we do at the library? How can we make this more, a more welcoming environment? And so that's where we're at. And as I mentioned to Rick, I, right now, we're just working on getting a community, excuse me, a committee meeting going because, so we can see what everyone else has to offer also. So we don't, I don't want this to just come from me or one person. We'd like to see what the whole committee does or says.
Absolutely. That's great.
Our, our social work intern, just by coincidence, one of her, one of her assignments is to be, is to, wherever she got assigned, just happens to be here, it was to look at, look at policies of the, of the organization for, and see if there's, you know, implicit bias that the organization may want to take a look at. So we're looking forward to seeing what she, I thought that dovetailed nicely with, I think, some of the things we had already been talking about in committee. So it'd be interesting to see a third party's take on that.
Anyone else?
I'm just happy that we're talking about it. I'm happy that it's not just being glossed over and ignored. And I feel like this is a long-term thing, like this should be going on for a long time, not just, you know, in the short term.
Right, absolutely. Angazi said she agrees, Sophia. I don't know if you have the chat up.
I just thought.
Yeah, all right, wonderful. So Rick kind of already talked about, or I'm sorry, Alyssa already talked about the public relations and marketing plan. And I don't, was there anything we needed to add to that? Thanks, Carol.
No, I, I don't think so, Samantha. I mean, we've been talking about, you know, the possibility of hiring a consultant. And I talked to the committee about, let's see what, let's see what Patron Point could do for us. And, you know, I'm glad the kickoff is just around the corner. And I, you know, it's, they could save us quite a bit of money in, in that regard and do the, some of the things that we've wanted to do in a more efficient way, so.
Okay, awesome. It looks really cool. I mean, from the demo, I watched the entire hour-long demo and it looks really cool. So if we can keep it going, I think that, that'll be really neat. So, um, so then the personnel update, I'll let you take that one.
Yeah, we've got, right before we closed, we had a couple of halftime hires we were going to make. And then we closed, so we put those on hold, talked to, and those are in the cert department and, and in programs, resources, and services. We're going to go ahead and fill a PRS one, not 100% sure yet about the cert one. Robert and I are going to talk about that. And I've got some other things we may need to do. We'll, we'll have, you know, I don't want to go too far into it because I don't want to violate anybody's privacy, but we, we're going to be a little short-staffed in the short term because of this pandemic. So we've got some gaps to fill and working on some plans for that, you know. And although, you know, I look at this year's budget, it looks like, it looks great in some ways. That may be whistling in the dark. So, you know, I'm taking these different staffing ideas and looking at it from every angle before, before I make a decision. Because there's, there's a lot of factors that go into, you know, I've always said, I don't want to, you know, just because you're having a good year, I don't want to go hire, 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 and then in January have to start letting people go. So, but, but I think we've got, I think we've got some ways to address some of our gaps in a, in a more efficient way, so.
Excellent, all right. So we move on to the sick leave policy addendum. This is an action item, so we'll have to do a roll call vote. But I do need, do you want to pop up what you have, Rick?
Yes.
This is the one that you added to.
Yeah, this was, I, I didn't have anything and I, you know, I kind of asked you guys or the, excuse me, the committee, what they would like to see. No, there it is. And, and this is kind of my understanding in a nutshell of what the committee wanted. They wanted, so we've got some, to give it, put this in context, we have some disincentives written into policies and contracts to call in sick. Well, we don't want a disincentive to call in sick during a pandemic, people to call in sick. I don't want to have anybody say, well, I would have called in sick, but, you know, I couldn't get in to see a doctor or whatever. So my understanding of the suggestion from the committee was that we, we have an addendum to policy that allows the city librarian in time of emergency to temporarily waive all or part of sick leave policies in order to make them less stringent. So not, you know, I can't go the other direction with them, but to make them more conducive to, to remove the disincentives, not to add disincentives.
Right. I would go ahead and add something about on a non-precedent setting basis for the, from the standpoint of the labor contract. You know, that's really important. So you don't have people saying, well, you know, we did that back then, so we're going to do it forever.
So, so add that this is to be understood as a non-presidentialary in nature.
Exactly.
Okay, I can, I can type that up as we're, as we're talking.
That's kind of standard labor contract language, so.
Okay. So I believe, I need a motion to amend the sick leave policy to what we are, what he's typing right now. So can I have a motion and then we can have a discussion afterwards?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, and then discussion, once he gets it typed up?
If I could spell precedentiary.
Non precedent-setting, I don't know, it does actually precedentiary. I can't even say that word.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting a.
But I'm sure Chris knows what we need, so.
Yes, and we, we put, you're right, we have put this on things before. And I think that's the word we use. And it's, I'm getting spell check is not saying that I'm bad, so let me get that saved. And I'll show you guys what I have. So I just added that sentence, any waivers to be understood as non-presidentialary in nature.
That sounds good.
All right, any other discussion? All right, then I will take a roll call vote. So we'll start with Sophia.
Yes.
Louise? Oh, I see your mouth when you say that. Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Angazi?
Yes.
Donna? All right, and Samantha, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to Extended Family Medical Leave Act policy. And the action is to, a recommendation to adopt, the recommendation from the committee, sorry, was to adopt the policy as, basically with the, with our letterhead, right?
Yeah, essentially, it's, it's a, most of it is straight from the law. And there's, there's a couple either-or choices. And it doesn't, you know, it's the law whether we adopt it or not. I just, I just think this is the best way for staff to understand it, put it in a policy, send it out to everybody, it's officially adopted.
So I will take a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt it.
Second.
All right, so any discussion? Angazi said her audio and video is frozen again. Oh, sorry, that's a Rick. Angazi, if you have any.
I'm sorry, can you guys repeat that last thing?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have a motion on the table to adopt the Extended Family Medical Leave Act policy. And we are in discussion now.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any discussion? All right, then I will take a motion, or I'm sorry, then I'll take my roll call vote, which starts with Sophia.
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Angazi?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. Okay, that motion passes. So we also have, the next one is a travel policy, that it was recommended to adopt the policy. This is actually the City of Decatur's, and we put our letterhead on it. And I don't, there were no other changes, as far as I know.
The City of Decatur didn't actually make it policy. They made it an advisory. And I had talked with Chris, he thought it was, it would be wise to just go ahead and adopt it as policy. He thought it was, it was a nice kind of down-the-middle approach.
Okay. And so I will take a motion to adopt the travel policy. All right.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, so we'll take our roll call. Sophia?
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes.
Angazi?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. All right, so the next one is the board bylaws. The action is to adopt, sorry, the resolution. This is based on Chris's guidance. And it has to do with our electronic meetings so that if, if you're unable to join in person, and this will allow you to join in person.
And to add some clarity, this is, this is, the governor just signed into law legislation about electronic meetings during a time of emergency. But this allows, this allows electronic participation for other reasons, whether there's an emergency order from the governor or not. It's actually something we could have adopted a year or two ago and probably should have. But this is, this is Chris recommend, Chris's recommendation. He, he's the one who, he drafted the resolution and sent it to me and thought it was something we should do.
So basically, it's saying that if for some reason, somebody from here cannot come, they could join our meeting via?
It enumerates some reasons, I believe, I'm, I'm going to share the screen here. Because that's, personal illness or disability, employment purposes or business of, or business of, or other emergency.
So I will take a motion to amend the bylaws to include electronic participation.
I make a motion.
All right, so we've got Sophia and we've got Michael.
Yep.
All right, and so any discussion? All right, roll call, Sophia?
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Angazi?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. All right, so the last one for the PPBR committee, last one, is the meeting room policy. Basically, we were changing the language to say that we would not charge nonprofits for meeting rooms. So, Rick, you have that?
Yeah, the only, the only change at all is in the first paragraph. And I'm sorry, I don't have the original, but the original says that, let me.
A reduced rate or discount?
Yeah, the, the original says that libraries will charge a reduced rate or discounted fee for nonprofit community and government organizations. My recommendation is that we not charge a fee at all. I recommended it a couple of years ago, but I think there's even more reason to recommend it now. I mean, I think it's in, once we start having meetings again, which, you know, God knows when that's going to be, but I think it'd be a nice gesture to, to those organizations in the community.
I think so too. Does anybody have a motion to accept as presented?
I'll move, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I just, I, for the record, I think that's a great thing for our community, just providing that those rooms are free. So I think, so, all right, so I will do a roll call vote. So Sophia?
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Angazi?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. All right, so I, there's no other listed. Does anybody have any other?
Samantha, there's also a fee, a fee schedule that is approved by the board. It didn't used to be approved by the board, but a few years ago, the board felt that that needed to be approved by the board. So it is approved by the board. And if we, in order to remove the not-for-profit fees, you would have to, and I'll pull it up here. I believe it was.
I'm sorry, I would have added that to the motion. I didn't, I didn't realize, because we didn't have that in the meeting.
So it, it simply just eliminates the, the, the reduced fees for the not-for-profits. And just, this is just the commercial rate, not unchanged from 2017.
Okay, so I will take a motion, I guess, to approve the fee schedule as presented. Then we get to do it all over again.
I make a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented.
Second.
All right, Sophia?
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Angazi?
Hi.
Donna?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. Okay, so that, that is motion as passed as well. So, all right, so I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thanks. We had a meeting of the finance committee last week. And we discussed the check register, which is, it was in your packet. As Sophia pointed out, we did discuss several of the upcoming big projects because the money comes through here, a reduced list of expenses this month. And the committee recommends your approval, acceptance of the check register.
I'll make a motion to approve the check register, if I can, yeah, if I can.
Second.
Amy? Are you doing it or I'm doing it?
I think so.
I'm sorry.
I think you're doing it, I'm sorry.
I can't make the motion if I'm taking the.
I think I'm making the motion.
Okay, well then that's, sorry, I got a little mixed up, I'm sorry. Okay, so we'll do our roll call again. So Sophia?
Yes.
Louise?
Yes.
Michael? You were frozen.
Angazi put yes on her in the chat.
I'm frozen.
All right, yeah, Michael, I heard, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
He went.
All right, Amy?
Yes.
Okay, Angazi is in the chat, and Donna?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the second item on, thank you very much, the second item on the agenda, there are two reports from Rick, which put down the current operating numbers and also his projection for the end of the fiscal year. Just to summarize that, we seem to be on track. Looks like revenue is now projected to be slightly down from where we thought it was going to be when the budget was passed. But on the other side, expenses are also down by about the same amount. So this year still looks pretty good. And, you know, we discussed some specific issues, particularly the equipment, kinds of things. discussed some specific issues, particularly the equipment, kinds of things, but I would say that we're, it looks like everything's on track for this year, and we'll, of course, keep an eye on things going forward.
All right, and so, or anybody else have anything other for the finance properties? I don't think so, the foundation did not have a meeting, so there's no report, the friends of the library did meet, and so Rick will talk about that, he was at the Zoom call.
Yeah, it was, it was a Zoom meeting, and it was, it wasn't on the library's account, it was on one of the board members' personal accounts, so we had 40 minutes, and it was a race, but the biggest takeaway is they, they want to come up with a plan to begin to accept book donations again, and that has been made official, and they are accepting donations, they've got a plan to quarantine all donations for one week before they handle and sort and handle it. There weren't any new requests for funding, but it's, it was a, man, people were talking, I didn't know everybody could talk so fast.
All right, excellent, and that'll be good news for some people who are trying to get rid of some stuff in their houses.
I ran into former board president Mary Gentry the other day, and they're, and she and her husband are relocating, and she said, when is that gonna happen, and I said, now, and she said, she, she said, thank God, I have thousands to.
Yep, so, all right, so the IHLS, we kind of talked about it a little bit, right? The delivery reinstatement?
Yeah, early, early July, I, did they move it to the sixth, Robert, or is it, is it, that week of the sixth is when delivery resumes?
I think it is the sixth, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that'll be exciting as well.
Yeah, it's moving very fast.
So we do not have any old business, and so heard a little bit about the phase reopening plans, what's new with that?
Yeah, before we, before we go on to that, Robert put in the chat that, the B A B, the H P C work is essentially done, B A B, where I can tell you this, the day's a little different, I'm looking at the thermometer right here, but this is the most comfortable in my office, it's been a long, long time, so that was, you know, a project that's a long time coming, and we're glad, and if you haven't been here, the landscaping is, is coming along, although I don't think the grass seed is took. So reopening, we talked a little bit about, we had about 350 people through, officially 379 people through the door on Tuesday, but I think some of it was me coming in and out, I was, I stood there for most of the day greeting, and when I wasn't there, Alyssa and Becky and Carol were also there greeting people and answering questions, and so today we opened up at 2:00, and opened until 8:00, and I, you know, my sense was, that first hour I was down there, my sense was it's going to be, today is gonna be Tuesday, as far as door count, next week, we will be open on Tuesday and Thursday, regular hours, that's 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, week after that, Monday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I had been saying I'd like in July to go back to regular hours, but as I mentioned, alluded to earlier, we've got some, some staffing challenges, you know, some directly COVID related, so it's not, nobody has it, but I, I think what might be more reasonable for the month of July is Monday through Friday, when looking at that possibility, things look a lot, a lot easier to, to plug all the gaps, so I, I think that's what I'm gonna plan on, Monday through Friday in July, you know, obviously, if things worsen, we, we need to be ready to, to go the other direction too, but if we go Monday through Friday, and it turns out we can have Saturdays staffing lines, then that'll be, that'll be, you know, a nice pleasant surprise, but I think we can, I think we can easily handle Monday, I don't know if that easily, we can handle Monday through Friday, and so Wednesday, not next week, but the week after on Wednesday is gonna tell us a lot, because that's the first time we will be offering curbside and inside services at the same time, we're not sure how that's gonna go, but I think that it'll even out, so if you're busy or outside, you're gonna have, I assume, fewer people in the building, so, but it'll tell us a lot, it's gonna be interesting to watch, and I, I think I mentioned in, in one of the committee meetings, I, we were, although we've had a pretty good response to curbside service, it, it hasn't been overwhelming, and I, and other libraries our size around the area have reported overwhelming, until I talked to the director at Urbana Free Library, and she said, it's been similar to us, and, and, you know, and I think, I think Robert kind of agrees with this on our, our people, and I think Alyssa agreed with it too, she, she said they're in Urbana, their, their patrons like to browse, they, you know, they don't, they don't do a lot of holds, they're more of a browsing library, and I think that.
Very nice library.
That may describe us too, so, but people are just, I, it's, I know this, but I don't, you know, I don't work with the public every day, so I forget, there's no other public institution that the, that the public feels such a strong emotional attachment to, people are really, really happy coming in, and, and, you know, we told those kind of stories when we went fine free, I mean, there were people literally in tears at the counter, tears of joy, but our, you know, and our staff is just as glad to be seeing the patrons again, so it's been, it's been fun.
I was so happy to be there, it was really cool, and I was, I was out there with Alyssa for a little while, and it was just like fun to see how excited everybody was, or like, we're, you know, we're glad to be back, so it was, it was really nice, so, so how is computer usage, that's the one thing, or do you know numbers yet?
It was, I don't have a number, but it was low, really low, I, I, I don't think I ever saw more than three people on at a time, and we made, I think we made 10 available plus the census computers, and, you know, we never used, we had, we had the wait, we haven't used our, our waitlist system in forever, but we were ready to go, we were even considering getting, you know, the, the little buzzers you get at the restaurant, you know, and I said, well, you know, let's, let's hold off on that, I'm glad we held off, because, and I, there was, there was some chatter on the list that other libraries are experiencing that too, it's not the, the overwhelming response, and Ngazi asked, who cleans the computers after each use, we, you know, I, I was gonna rely on economics and say, here's the, here's the cleaning, the Clorox wipes, use, you know, wiping everything down before you use it, then there's that built-in incentive to people, but it was slow enough that we were just able to do it ourselves.
That's a good question. So, anything else on, any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, the plant fitness, exactly.
Yeah. So, all right, well, hopefully we'll just keep moving forward, so next in new business is board openings, there's really no update, I haven't heard of any candidates, so.
Let me, let me give you, I, I did hear from Susan Avery, who is still waiting, and I, I text Julie to see if, you know, what was next, and I think she forgot that I sent her application to Julie, March 3rd, so I haven't heard from Julie, but I know with all this COVID stuff going on, you know, it probably hasn't been at the top of the list.
Yeah, I know, so I will keep trying her, and see if I can, you know, get ahold of her, because I want to talk to her anyway, about, you know.
Susan's ready, she texted me, like, what's the next step?
Yeah.
Get on board.
Okay.
And also, whatever happened Amanda Pipett from Milliken University Staley Library, like, two years ago, I had heard she was slated to join, and then nothing ever came of that.
I don't know, but I'm.
I, I, if I recall correctly, and I actually, she told me she was put on a waitlist.
Well, we could have.
On a waitlist?
That's what, that's how I remember it, it's been a couple years, but, you know, I know she filled out the application.
Okay.
I suggest contacting her again, she'd be phenomenal.
Okay.
I agree.
You, can, Ngazi, can you send me her contact info?
I should can, I'll text it to you sometime this evening.
Awesome, thank you, all right, so.
People have to fill out that form at the city's website, right, and so my question is, are there people that filled out that form that are just kind of in limbo?
Exactly.
You know, I mean, things kind of got a little wonky with the city, but maybe there's people that fill out a form, and for some reason, because the city got busy with something else, you know, my question is, can we figure out if, what that list looks like, and who's still interested?
Right, because there's four, four, four openings here, so.
Right.
Yeah, so, then we'll move on to our last new business topic, which is our outgoing trustees, and it's very sad that we've been, been together for a long time, so it's Ngazi and Donna and Louise, so we do appreciate everything you've done for the library, so we're, the, there will be a book donated in each of your honor, so if you can let Rick know your selection, that would be.
Or I could give you a list from which to select, whatever you prefer, but, you know, we'd like to, you know, we've done things a different way in the past, I would think, an internal, you know, gift from the board, and, to the library from the board, and that gift would be a book with, in your honor, thanking you for your service.
I'll let you know.
I could go either way, you know, sending my, of course, you know me, it'd probably be like a rose book or something, you know. Another rose book, but if you, if you want to send me the list, I'll, I'll take a look at it.
All right, sounds good, well, again, thank you guys for your service, and we'll miss you at the meeting, so.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you, we'll miss you.
There's very few of us left.
I know.
One, two, three, four.
And then, and Greg, yeah.
Oh, five, yeah.
Yeah, so there's five of us, so.
Board of trustees survivor style.
Exactly.
And then there were six.
Yeah.
LOL.
Ten little Indians.
Oh, boy.
Oh my gosh, all right, so our last topic is the chapter of serving our public, chapter five, technology, and I'll let Rick take it away.
Sorry, I was muted. So, I'm, I'm gonna review this, but no, the, the new edition is out, and I just haven't received it yet, because nobody's at ILA to send it to me, we've ordered it, but we haven't gotten it yet, there is a new edition of this out, but we'll, we'll look at this edition just to, so you know, essentially, what it wants to know is, 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 are we, do we have the basics of, of technology needs for, for a library, and for a public library, and, and the, the short answer is yes, you know, we have, we have policies that, that you guys review, we have budgets for technology needs, you know, we have, we protect the integrity of that environment, we have an automated catalog, which complies with the, the current standards, you know, we, we can check off all these boxes, I'd be happy to discuss further if, you know, in more detail, if there's something you have specific questions about, but, but we get this, and, you know, maybe by next month, I'll have the new, the new edition of this out to, to begin reviewing.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Rick?
No, but I actually have a question for you, Samantha, since our board is changing, are we gonna change up our committee, because it seems like finance committee has almost everybody on it, and then Michael's by himself.
Yeah, well, yeah, and me.
You're on both, so.
I'm on both, yeah.
Because Amy, Greg, and I are all on finance.
Yep. And we need three to participate.
You're Greg, if they're switching.
What? You just froze.
Frozen, yeah, frozen.
If Julie would get, get busy with Susan Gentry, we would have her on the board right now.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to push.
Okay, yeah, so I will, I'll call, I'll call the city tomorrow, and see if I can get ahold of her, and push for it, because we, yeah, we do, because if we take everybody off of the finance committee, then there's, so, let's see, that's.
Consider, if you, if you're down to five, I would consider simply canceling the, the committee meetings and discussing it all, and that you, I mean, you'll be small enough that you may be able to handle this, you know, what's normally decided in committee more easily in full board if there's a type of you, but.
Well, we can, how about, we can consider that maybe, but we can also try, I mean, because the priority is to get more people on the board.
It's a, it's a stopgap.
Yeah, and, and I don't know how many policies we have upcoming to review, because we got through quite a bit, quite a bit, I think we still have the intoxication, but that's not, maybe not a priority, so I, you know, I don't know what other, we can talk, Rick, you and I can talk about that, I guess, offline, so with that, does anybody have anything else, since, you know, it's the last.
Throwing that out there.
Yes, yeah, no, it's, it's very good to think about, definitely, Sophia. All right, then I will take a motion to adjourn, and.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We still have to roll call.
Second.
All right, Sophia?
Aye.
Louise?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Amy?
Yes.
Ngazi?
Aye, my very last, aye.
Your very last, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Donna?
Aye.
And Samantha, aye. All right, meeting's adjourned at 5:37, bye.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.